Okay.
I'm showing six o'clock where they call public meeting Henry County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock PM Wednesday, July the 22nd, 2015, please come to order. Has somebody moved to accept the agenda's published?
So moved.
Have a motion District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. This right here is going to be a public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna read this to you. Purpose of this meeting is to, the notification of a tax increase with three public hearings. The Levity Authority must hold three public hearings, allowing the public input into the proposed increase in taxes. Two of these public hearings may coincide with other required hearings associated with the millage rate process such as a public hearing required by OCGA Section 36-81-5, when the budget is advertised and the public hearing required by OCGA Section 48-5-32, when the millage rate is finalized. One of the three public meetings must begin between 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Okay? We had meeting number one this morning at 9:00 o'clock, that constituted meeting number one. This is meeting number two, uh, and it's at 6:00 PM, so that makes that requirement of the law. Now, um, having said that, the, uh, the third meeting would be July the 29th at 9:00 AM to adopt the millage rate. Now, having said that, I would recognize the, uh, presentation team, if they would, is to come up like they did this morning and, uh, share with the public the, uh, requirements as well. Thank you. We have, uh, Task Commissioner David Curry and Entrim County Manager Sherri Matthews.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Like this morning, we've got different, uh, slides for presentation. This morning, we showed a video where the tax dollars go in Henry County. I expected more citizens to be here this evening and with respect to their time, we condensed that down to a dollar bill chart to show the citizens exactly where their property tax dollar goes. And you can tell by the chart, it may be a little hard to read, but you can tell by the chart, that roughly one-third of the property tax dollar goes to the county, two-thirds goes to school system. Um, we have found that this works a lot better than the pie chart. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Um, I believe Ms. Sherri has a PowerPoint she wants to now go over.
Yes. Good evening Chair and Board members. Um, as David has indicated, um, he gave us a quick synopsis of where our tax dollars go, but wanted to jump right in and go over the information that we presented again this morning at 9:00 AM during the first public hearing. Um, as you all are aware, the Board did adopt, um, the fiscal year 2016 budget in May of this year, and that budget was adopted at $134.6 million. Um, prior to that budget being adopted, the Board did adopt a resolution capping our unassigned fund balance at 25% of the annual budget. The $134.6 million budget, which was adopted by the Board in May, had a budget shortfall of $4.2 million, in which we were going to use a portion of fund balance for that. Um, that was going to be based off of the $2.7 million that was left in our unassigned fund balance. Um, as you all are aware, the budget did increase for this fiscal year, and it increased for a number of reasons. Um, some of the reasons included increased departmental needs. Um, we've heard from our citizens that there's a lot of things that we're missing the mark on, and we need to, to, to increase those, um, services that we're currently providing. We also provided a 3% raise for all employees. Um, as you all are aware, our employees haven't had a raise in a number of years, and this was just a first mark at trying to let our employees know that we recognize the job that they're doing. We also will kick off this year on October 1st, we'll have a ribbon cutting to open our employee health clinic. Um, this is something that we're all very excited about, um, and it's a clinic that will be utilized by all employees who utilize our health insurance. The Board also graciously, um, elected to take on the insurance premium increase, which was about $1.7 million. We also, um, were instructed through state legislation, um, that the judges would have to receive an increase in their salaries, which will go into effect in January of the upcoming year. There were several new requested positions and salary increases, um, again, due to the increase in services in a number of the departments, there were a number of departments that requested, um, some new positions. We also provided additional funding to the library. Um, there were several, um, jail improvements and senior center improvements, um, that were needed at very, at various of our, at very, um, senior centers. And as you all are aware, most importantly, we have one new fire station that's coming onboard this year at a cost of about $1.18 million. Now, the fire station that's coming onboard, that is simply for the operation, the employees, um, and the insurance increase. That does not include the 3% increase, but that's something that we will have to go back and recalculate. Um, as you all are aware, the fire station, the design is actually being done by SPOSS, but the funding and operation will have to come out of general fund. Most notably, we have our budget adopted for this year, but at the staff level, we've decided that we need to start planning now for our future. We don't want to wait until the budget cycle next year to talk about things that we know are already on the radar. Um, so as you all are aware, we have a New Hampton Senior Center that is set to open next year. The operation and, and the operation for that senior center, including the employees, will come at a cost of about $335,000. We also have the rec center that's going to be part of the Hampton Senior Center, as you all are aware, that is a multi, um, use facility, senior center on one side, recreational facility on the other side. That will cost the county approximately $180,000 for operations, the employees, and the increase in insurance. And then we also have two new fire stations as a result of our current SPOSS four program that will cost the county about $1.1 million per station, in which those two new fire stations are set to come online, um, next year. Again, those stations are being, the design and construction is being funded by our SPOSS program. Now, I'll ask you to look at our 2015 tax digest. We had a tax digest increase of $6,632,273. Um, we had a less growth amount, or an increase in our growth amount of $344,421, for a true tax dollar increase of $6,287,852. With 100% rollback, the required millage rate would have to go to 13.234 from the present 14.298 millage rate, which again is our current millage rate. Our millage rate options, um, as presented. Option one, we could retain our current millage rate of 14.298. Option two, we could roll the millage rate back to 13.873, which would be a reduction of 0.425. And then obviously, not an option is the 100% rollback, given, which would be 13.234. I'll go into more details to discuss all three options. Option one, which is again our current millage rate, which is 14.298. As you all are aware, the citizens were given a million dollars, um, back last year. The retainage of the current millage rate will result in an increase of $6.6 million, with a true tax dollar increase of 6.2. Again, that's less the new properties that have come onboard. The current millage rate would cover the $4.2 million budget shortfall, use of fund balance, without having to utilize any funds from our existing unassigned fund balance. As you all are aware, when we adopted the budget, we did have the $4.2 million, in which we were going to use fund balance to ba, to balance that amount out. The retained excess for unassigned fund balance, which is $2.4 million, could be added to the present 2.7 unassigned fund balance excess. Again, that's if we were to keep the millage rate at the 14.298. Why the millage rate can't be rollback 100% to the 13.234? Again, if we were to do the millage rate and we were to do 100% rollback, we would only retain $344,000, um, from the new growth, and the unassigned fund balance would be $1.1 million below the required 25% as adopted by resolution. One thing that's most notably important for me to mention now is, um, last night during our board meeting, we had an individual that came before the Board and discussed fiber optics. And that's something that we are certainly pursuing, and something that we think, um, would be most critical for the county, and it's items like those, or those big-ticket items, that we certainly have to again, start planning for. And then finally, option two, the rollback of 13.873 millage rate. The taxpayers would get back $2.4 million. The county would retain only $4.29 million, of which $344,2421 is growth. And this equals again, the total tax dollar increase of $6.6 million. Remembering, we had a budget shortfall of $4.2 million, the decrease in unassigned fund balance would only be $2,0663. Again, that's if we were to go with option two, which is the 13.873. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for the, uh, staff? You do.
Sherri, I've had some questions about the health clinic, and what does it mean for the taxpayers? Everybody understands what it means for the employees, but I've had some, um, pretty, um, heated conversations about what does it, and how does it affect the taxpayers? Would you run through exactly why we did the health clinic and what it does mean to the taxpayer?
Absolutely. The health clinic, um, as you all probably are aware, we had an increase in our insurance premiums this year, and it's a result of a number of our county employees who are utilizing, um, their primary care facilities, or having emergency issues that may come up. Um, so what we did internally is we worked with, um, we actually had to go through a bidding process, which our broker handled. But what we were trying to do is to see if there were a way that we could reduce, um, the number of premium, or reduce our costs that we're, we're incurring right now for the number of employees who are having to utilize, um, their primary care physicians. The clinic, um, will be funded again through general fund, but all county employees will be able to utilize the clinic at no cost to those county employees if they are part of our current health insurance here at the county. Um, our desire certainly is to, to, to hope that we will see a reduction in the number of claims that we've received. Um, it's my desire certainly to make sure that all of our employees utilize the clinic so that we're not seeing an increase in our insurance claims.
What was our premium increase from last year to this year?
It was $1.7 million, in which the Board elected, um, to take on that additional increase, and it was not put on the county employees.
And then how much did we, did the clinic cost?
The clinic is at a cost of $700,000.
And what kind of savings do we project? I mean, of course, these are rough, but what kind of savings are we projecting for the taxpayer as far as premium? Because that, that's the gist of this, is we're going to lower our premiums as we go through, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The, the, the gist of it is that our premiums, we, premiums, we should see a reduction, um, based on the number of claims that should be coming in. Um, at this point, we don't know what those numbers will be, but we have been told, um, because a lot of the, there are some existing clinics that are onboard in other jurisdictions in which they're able to see a reduction in their claims. That is something that we will be reporting back to the Board, um, and we're going to try to do it every three months or quarterly so that the Board can see that there is some return on our investment.
Okay. Yeah, just keep us up to date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
How you doing, Florida District One?
Sherri, all the monies that we save on the clinic, I understand, will be refunded back to us by the insurance company, correct?
The monies that we save on the clinic.
On the claims, correct.
I'm not sure that I, I'm clear on your question.
Okay. All right, we budgeted $16 million. We only spend $14 million. By saving money with the clinic, we will get that $2 million refunded back to us from the insurance company, correct?
If, we, we budget a certain amount for our claims, and if we do not go over the amount that's budgeted, that, those funds will be returned back to the county. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Sherri, uh, looking at some paperwork we got last night, this may be a question for Fred, but, uh, he showed that we had $46 million in fund balance, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and I'm, Fred, I'm going to defer to Fred, since I think that question was raised last night, I believe by the Chairman, so hold one second for me.
Commissioner, um, yes, last night, I reported there was, at the end of May, $46,400,000 in excess funds in the general fund. That was as of May 31st. As an update, I just want to show you this. As of, uh, May 31st, as it shows, we started at $46,400,000. At the end, in June itself, we withdrew $9 million. Needs, expenditures, capital, a lot of other things. We added $1,007,000. At the end of June, we're, we were at $39 million in cash, not 46. In July, so far, we took $4 million out in July 13th, and today, we had to take $5 million, uh, to make sure, because we got down to, I think, $500,000, so we got to pull $5 million out for payrolls and things like that. Uh, we will in July roughly estimate $30 million. Based on where we've been the last couple of months and histor, historicals, I'm estimating we will spend another, use another $8 million in August, and $8 million in September. That will pull that money market fund, if you would, down to $14 million. If you look down here, our budget is 134, 25% requirement is 33. Therefore, this 14 million of the 133, or the 134 budget rather, is 10 and a half percent. So by the time we get down to September, using the cash as I just mentioned, we will be down to roughly, on those estimates, 10 and a half percent of the, uh, next year's budget. So, yes, we start, and again, same thing as we've said before, in November, you get all your taxes, um, premium, property, and so on. Your expenditures are roughly $11 million a month. We are not collecting those taxes because they're sitting in the bank, which is those funds we're looking at, and you have to take those funds out of there. Be no different than if you were getting a paycheck, a monthly, and your expenses were equal to it, and somebody said, "We're going to give you six months of paychecks on January 1st." You would still spend the same amount each month, but you would be digging into your savings account that you accumulated in January for the remaining five months. And that's what's happened basically through property taxes and all the other taxes that come in early, which allow us to have the excess funds at the end of May. Hope that answers your question.
I have, could you leave that up there, please?
Sure.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that, uh... Bring it down a little bit. No, bring it the other way. Okay. June, you had a withdrawal of $9,000, but you deposited, uh, nine million, but you deposited $1,705,000. So at the end of June, you obviously had $39 million. Then, in July, you took two withdrawals out, one was $4 million, one was five, but you don't show any deposits. Uh, July, you, you ended up with $30,115. In August, you, you show an, this eight million withdrawal, but you show no deposits, and you show an estimated September. So we, we're not making any deposits in the month of, uh, uh, June, I mean, Ju, July, August, and September?
We will have deposits and we'll have expenditures. I'm estimating, based on the future months as we go, as you can see, I've reduced it to eight from the nines that we were running, and basically sort of accounted for in here, about a million dollars of extra monies netting against it.
So, so we're saying we're not anticipating any deposits?
No, I'm saying the net of nine that we've been taking out, in the month's not over, be, we may need before the end of July to take an additional amount of money besides the five. We do it about every, from here forward, about every two weeks. We find ourselves in need of money because of the payroll and, and other expenditures. And again, with this year's budget being higher than last year's, our monthly expenditures will be slightly higher as well, wages and so on increases. But, again, based on nine, but, but forecasting eight, I'm sort of considering there's another million-dollar net in there for, for deposits.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we did distribution today, I signed the checks today and brought them up to finance. There will be some deposits, but as Fred mentioned, the closer we get to the new property tax deadline for November, those deposits get smaller and smaller. Then you get an influx of cash in November, and from November to the next November, those deposits gradually decrease.
Well, I already knew that, because otherwise, it, it wouldn't, at one time, it wouldn't have been 46 million. So I, I know it was a significant amounts of money going back into the, into the pot, otherwise, we couldn't have bought $46 million worth of money market. That's just for my benefit. Anybody else have any questions?
That's it, Fred.
Thank you so much. Uh, the Board doesn't have any more questions. Uh, what I'd like to do now, without any objection to the Board, is open the floor up for a required public hearing, and allow each person that comes up to speak three minutes. And what I'd like for you to do is come to the podium, state your name, and you got three minutes, and I will look up here, and here's the clock. Now, it, it's this public hearing, it's not like a zoning public hearing, you get up and speak for it or against it, and it doesn't, uh, we're not keeping score on the timeframe, other than the three minutes.
So I will open the floor up now for somebody that would approach the podium and, and speak.
Doggone foot went to sleep. I was looking here at the Georgia Constitution, and I'm looking...
Say your name, please.
I'm sorry. Uh, my name's Carl Alfred, I'm, I live at, uh, 43 Thurman Road, State, in Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. I was looking at the way it was posted in the, on the website, as far as what the percentages were in the various locales, and, uh, what they would mean to those people living there, like in McDonough, unincorporated, Stockbridge, and so on and so forth. And I noticed that the amounts varied from, uh, location to location. And I alluded to that, or talked about that a little bit last night, but in looking at the Georgia Constitution, paragraph three, says, "Uniformity, classification of property assessments of agricultural land, utilities, whatnot. All taxes shall be levied and collected under the general laws and, and for public purposes only, except as otherwise provided in subparagraphe B, C, D, and E. All taxation shall be uniform upon the same class of subjects within the territorial limits of the authority levying the tax." Unless I'm missing something here, those percentages were different for these various locales. How can there be uniformity if there is a, a change in that? That, that's just not registering in my wee little brain here, so, um, if you could address that, I would be most appreciative. And also, couple things come to mind when looking at the CAFER, and looking at the amount of assets that the county holds. Assets that are real property, and assets that are not on the tax rolls because they are in county hands. Has any thought been given to liquidating those assets in a, in a form that would return them back to the, uh, tax rolls? And put money back into the coffers by virtue of selling this, this property? I don't know exactly how much land the county needs. Don't know that. But I know they don't need it all. You have buildings that go and come, you know, all the time. You have other corporations within the county structure that, uh, are buying and selling these, these properties all the time. But they're not really reflected properly in the comprehensive annual financial report. Bottom line is, there has been and remains, when budgeted properly, properly, enough money coming into this county to be able to maintain at a even keel, without having to force any more, um, tax increases upon the people. I'm certain of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Jennifer Rosenbaum, and I reside at 1521 Lincoln Terrace, McDonough, Georgia. And I am here to address the Board again. I feel like this probably falls on deaf ears, as it did last year, but I just wanted to let you all know that I'm a little bit disappointed, because I came up here last year during the millage rate hearings, and I let you all know that I, as a citizen myself, had a few ideas that could have been pursued, and that you all have endless possibilities of avenues that you can pursue to make the budget meet the revenue that's coming in, or to find other ways to increase your revenue than to place that burden off on the property tax owners in this county. And I feel that you all did not pursue any of those avenues this year, despite my encouragement last year that you do so. I'm a little bit discouraged, because, because almost for all of you, maybe with the exception of one, this is your second job. This is a second source of income for you, uh, a way for you to have health insurance, whatever it may be, this is a second source of income for you. For many of us in the county, there is no second source of income. We don't have extra money coming into our pocket, but what we do have is extra bills coming out. I was happy to see that you all addressed the employees of the county, and by giving them a raise, but I was almost at the same time befuddled by it, because at the same time that you increased their wages, a lot of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, some people were told that they also had to increase the amount that goes into their retirement, which almost negated their raids, raise, if not made them get less of a paycheck because of that. So it's hard for me that, it's hard for me to understand that a Board that has, you know, limitless amounts of resources at their hand, people that you pay in this county to be here for you, to do the research for you, people like Mr. Alletta, who spends a lot of time refinancing our loans so that we can save interest rates, I ju, it just, it just befundles my mind that we haven't come up with a solution that would take this burden off the taxpayers yet. And what I will say is that, speaking, speaking of, you know, Mr. Alletta and other employees here, all the time, almost every week, that we have a meeting here, I can hear Mr. Preston patting the back of an employee or, uh, department head, and says, "Hey, by the way, thank you so much for saving the Henry County taxpayers these dollars. What you're doing is helping out the Henry County taxpayers." But what I can't understand is if people like Mr. Alletta are working so hard and saving this county millions of dollars, why is it that the taxpayers are burdened to pay so much more millions of dollars? I think it would be a little bit more understanding if we were in the same time last year, where I came to the Board and I said, "Well, why are we budgeting taking money out of fund balance? Why are we doing that?" "Oh, well, we didn't know that it would have to affect our credit rating, and we were going to have to push that money back in there." But gentlemen, this year, you have no excuse. You were in the same position last year, same position where you took money out of fund balance to equalize your budget, and then were left $4 million short. So at this point, I do fault you, because you had every opportunity to find alternate ways about, to go about this, and you didn't.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
I'm Joyce Hinton, and I live at 904 Flat Shose Church Road, Stockbridge. And as usual, I'll make mine shortened to the point. Don't raise our taxes. Uh, the assessments, you all play this game, you say, "Oh, well, you know, we're going to roll this back," but then at the same time, the assessment goes up, "Well, if you do the math, it doesn't work." The average citizen, and I've talked to several, their assessment has gone up $20,000 or more dollars. And even if you roll it back, they're still going to wind up paying anywhere from $200 to $250 more dollars in taxes. These people are hurting. The groceries have gone up, gas is going up, everything, utilities, everything is going up. These people have unexpected expenses. I myself, our, our hot water... unexpected expenses. I myself, our, our hot water heater blew up. We had to replace the hot water heater. The air conditioner went out of my car. I had to deal with that. We've had to deal with unexpected medical expenses, and these, this $200 or $250 more that you all are taking. These people could have used them for these unexpected expenses. And again, as Jennifer said, a lot of these people only have one job, and that's why a lot of them are not here protesting tonight, because they're working to make ends meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Anybody like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Chairman, are you expecting a second time when everybody's coming up?
Say again.
Are you expecting members to come up for a second time and roll it up?
I can't hear you. Could you come up to the podium and state that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if, last year, you allowed people to come up for a second time if, if everybody was done. I was wondering if you were offering that same opportunity this year?
Okay. I'll tell you what I will do. I will, since everybody has had an opportunity to speak once, if you want to speak again, I will let you have two minutes. I think that would be fair and equitable.
Okay, thank you.
With no objection from the board, I'll give you two minutes. Okay. So the floor is now open to continue the public carrying for two minutes, and you have to state your name again, please.
That's fine. Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jennifer Rosenbaum, and I reside at 1521 Lincoln Terrace in McDonough, Georgia. And again, I just wanted to let you all know that I strongly oppose this tax increase. I know last year, Mr. Chairman, you voted against this. Mr. Barham, you also graciously voted against this, and I wanted to encourage you all, as well as other members of the board, to think about your constituents when you're going in for this vote. I mean, it's easy to say, "Yes, we need more money." It's easy to say, "The only way to get more money is to push, push it off on the property tax owners," because we're the scapegoat in this county. If we need more money, it's always put on the property tax owners. And I think that it's just a time for us to take an opportunity, take a step back, look at other ways that we can get revenue here, look at other ways that you can save money here, that you've had the department heads looking at ways to save money. You've had other people come in and tell you about ways you can save money. For instance, with the building department, increasing the fees there. I know we had a big debacle about that a few months ago. I mean, there are other ways to approach this, and I am just seriously discouraged that, you know, we went through this whole spiel last year, and no one took the opportunity, no one took the step up to look for alternate ways or to take the advice that citizens brought to you. This is a board that's supposed to be responsive to the citizens, to our concerns, to our needs, and also to our wallets. You all are in charge of the money that we give to you. We entrust in you that money to spend it wisely and to do so remembering that it's not yours. And I think that it's highly unfair that the citizens of this county that are here, that are providing the stability for this county by settling down here, planting roots, are being penalized by this county by us being the burden that this county bears its back off of. So I would just really ask you all to consider rolling that millage rate back. When this millage rate got this high, the board at that time promised that the second that the tax assessment started going up, we would roll this millage rate back. I'm only asking you to live up to that promise that that board made to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard for two minutes? Yes, sir.
Chairman Smith, fellow commissioners, my name's Charles Danny. I live at 557 Heathmore Drive. I know, as politicians, I know it's extremely challenging to come up with a budget because you represent many people from different walks of life, different needs, different wants, and they all expect different things from Henry County. And getting into the rat race of setting the millage rate assessments, I know that's a, it's a big fog for the average individual. But I challenge you, as a board, to make this county as, as efficient as possible, as open as possible, and control costs the best you can. And I challenge you for next year is that we have a lower millage rate, lower taxes for the average individual. I know it's a big goal, big challenge, but I believe you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard for two minutes?
Carl Swenson, again. Just a note, I have some friends that work for the county, and they were talking about the recent increases and how it has been offset by the amount of money that's coming out of their check, and it basically, it wasn't what they were expecting. But in addition to that, the management of the various agencies you've got out there, all of them can be tightened up. All of them can be tightened up. And if they are incentivized to work under budget as opposed to being incentivized to meet their budget, you might realize some savings in that regard. And to that end, I want to offer a suggestion that you think about forming a citizens oversight committee specifically to assist Fred Aletta and you guys in the formation of these budgets, because more brains are better than one. Just a thought.
Anybody else like to be heard for two minutes? Would anybody else like to be heard for two minutes? If not, I'm declaring that the public session pertaining this issue is completed. It's over. Does any commissioner like to make a comment or statement at this time? I yield the floor to District Four.
I actually would like to address Ms. Rosenbaum, actually. You know, last year, I was here. I was sitting back there behind you, and you didn't fall on deaf ears. Last year, you said, you know, about the hotel tax, and I actually explored the hotel tax trying to raise it, and it's just not really an option. We don't have very many hotels outside of incorporated, you know, outside of the cities. But I have looked at other avenues. I have brought this board at least two other ways to get quite a bit of revenue, actually where we could do 100% rollback. I brought the fees from residential builders, and you all were here. I know Ms. Hinton was when I had, me and Mr. Cash had some words, and that was about trying to generate revenue from another place other than coming from your pockets. And I, I, I hate it that we can't get together as a board and get that done. We were able to pass some of the fees, but we were not able to pass all the ones that I wanted to. And I've got a few others that I've got my eye on, but I can't get support from enough. I need three more votes to make that happen, and I can't do it. You know, and we talk about why it's going up, and, and I've had this talk with Ms. Hinton before, about the splotch. It's a double-edged sword. You know, we, we have to pay out of the budget for the fire stations. I mean, we can't, there's no way to get out of it. I've tried, I've looked. There's no way. We, we have to fund these out, the fire stations. Then the employee raise. I had a long talk with Ms. Hinton about employee raises, about, you know, where was the money going to come from? I, I've been accused of not working with the chairman, and this was the chairman was the one who championed that. I got behind the chairman on that to work with the chairman. And here we are now, you know, I feel like I'm getting criticized for working with the chairman when I tried to. You know, this year, it is a little different than last year. We did pass a resolution where we have, we have to keep 25% in our fund balance. It's a resolution, just like everybody else, we have to follow the rules. Yes, it is for our credit rating, but, you know, I ran on lowering how much we owe, and we'll be just about debt-free in six years. We used our credit rating not to borrow more money, but to refinance the money that has already been borrowed. And I'm going to tell you, that's a, that's a good use of money, and that's a good use of a credit rating. So I understand where you're coming from. I have looked, I have tried, I have brought several things to this board, and, you know, I'm doing what I can. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Not somebody move, we adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, so move. Meeting's adjourned.